I'm going to call to your order this remote attendance of Lacey City Council meeting on April 9th, 2020. To order, can you please join me with a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So this is obviously the first complete remote attendance of our Lacey City Council. I'm going to go through roll call and I'm going to unmute the council. And when I call your name, can you please say if you're here? Councilmember Stedman.
Present.
Councilmember Cox.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pratt.
Here.
Councilmember Greenstein.
Present.
Councilmember Kunkel.
Present.
Councilmember Millard.
Present.
So we have an agenda and consent agenda. When you make the motion, can you please state your name? When I, when you make the motion and whoever makes the second, please state your name. So can I get a motion?
If I, Deputy Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda and consent agenda items.
Second, plenty.
And councilmember, Deputy Mayor approved it? And councilmember Greenstein seconded? Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, we have an agenda. We did have a link that is public comment at ci.lacy.wa.us for any public comment for today's meeting. We have received no public comment. So next up on our agenda, under ordinances, is ordinance 1566, the 2020 budget amendment for COVID-19 public health emergency. Is Troy available? There he is.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Happy to see each of you safe and well. As the mayor stated, the item before your consideration this afternoon is an out-of-cycle budget amendment to the 2020 budget. This amendment before you is limited to two items and they are both related to the COVID-19 public health emergency. The first item is related to the transactions necessary to fund the $1 million small business stabilization fund, which you authorized on March 26th. The source of funds for this is coming from your $2.5 million commitment for strategic investment. The second amendments are related to the transactions necessary for the HVAC replacement for the Lacey Community Center. On March 19th, you approved that contract with the state for the design and replacement of that system. And you deem that as an important issue and one that you hope to see completed during the COVID stay-home, stay-safe initiative since the facility isn't in use. So again, the amendment before you is limited to these two items. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Councilmember Stedman, I'd move to approve ordinance 1566 amending the 2020 budget.
Councilmember Cox, I second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt this ordinance 1566, the 2020 budget amendment for the COVID-19 public health emergency. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Greenstein. Let's see if I unmute you.
Couple of businesses locally already about how impactful that, that grant fund money is to them. So I think it's a, it was a great decision by this council and I applaud all of you for supporting it.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion? Deputy Mayor?
Deputy Mayor?
Well, I was just going to say.
Mayor had a question.
It's not a question, it was pretty much a statement. It's a good time to work on the HVAC's system during this time because no one's there. It'll be a lot easier and so that's a good move, I think.
Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Stedman?
I just wanted to urge the city if they had any, you know, not just with this program, but any other federal assistance that might help small businesses and local businesses in general, that we put it on our website and Facebook and so we can all promote it and hopefully get those, that information to business community and residents. That's it.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next up is under our city manager's report, the Lacey Small Business Stabilization Fund briefing. I think that will be Rick Walk. There's Scott. Good to see everyone.
Hey Scott.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council.
Good afternoon, Rick.
Hey, Rick.
Scott, were you going to start off or?
Yeah, so obviously the, the million dollars that the city council authorized back in April 2nd, we wanted to make sure that money was put to good use and as quickly as possible. There's been a lot of interest, I think, from council and the community and specifically the business community in terms of how well we're doing with that program. So wanted to have Rick Walk, the Community Economic Development Director, provide the most latest information on that program. So Rick, with that, can you provide some of the details on how the program is doing?
Yes, I'd be happy to and again, thank you, Mayor and City Council for authorizing this program. I think it's been very well received as I think some of you may have heard out in the community. And before I get started too, just as a recap, you guys authorized, the council authorized this program on March 26th and we were able to, on that following Monday, set up to start accepting applications. And I, we couldn't, wouldn't have been able to do that without the great work done by Kaylee Purcell and Michael K. to the EDC and our partnership there to help us facilitate this process as quickly as possible. So with that sitting set up, they were able to start reviewing applications and meet the basic criteria and start making awards as of last Friday. To date, there's been over 165 application requests. 28 of those have been funded. 32 are process pending, meaning that they either need to upload additional information, some of their financial reports or other missing documentation. And a lot of it has to do with getting that information from their accountants in terms of all the other work their accountants are doing as well. So there is some lag on that part, but we've communicated with all those to make sure that they're aware that they do need to submit those, that information. And then there's another 82 that had some initial reviews, but now they got to go into the formal process. So we had a great response and a great need that was demonstrated out there. Of those 165, also 25 were, were denied already. And those were because they didn't meet the basic criteria of either being within the employee threshold or profitability or those other criteria that's required that council set up. The average fund award has been about $8,500 per application. So it is, we, all, all grant applications are not for the full 10,000, which is great. It gets us to be able to touch as more businesses as possible. And so with the 28 already funded, we're at about 257, or excuse me, $247,000 that have been granted and funded out into the community to, to those 28 businesses. And the common theme of all those businesses are submitting applications and the needs is being, and they're using that money is to pay rent, utilities and payroll to keep their doors open. And so it's become very, it's been a great demonstration of the need out there, especially with federal and state funds still not being able to hit the streets as of yet. And so that's been some part of the feedback we've received from the businesses is that this is a wonderful thing that City Lacey has done because they are not able to get to the other funding that's going to become available at some point in the future. I want to break down, I'm going to go through a couple of testimonials because as we're giving, as these awards were being made, I mean Kaylee's had a great job of being able to contact and notify these business owners and, and they've responded with some letters and testimonials that I want to read with council's indulgence with three or four. And what I'll do too, just so you are aware, is I'll pull all this information together because again, I just received it all earlier this afternoon. I plan on pulling all this information and creating a written report so you'll have that and this information as well. The first one is, "Dear City of Lacey Council Members, I want to thank you so much for the grant money. I've lost about 40% of my income due to COVID-19. The stress that my husband and I have felt over the past couple of weeks has been great. In the last couple of weeks, I've looked at all the financial options to keep my business afloat. Besides the federal aid, you have been the only other source of financial relief that doesn't require taking out long-term debt in the form of loans. Through personal experience and the stories of the news, the federal aid is tied up and the banks aren't ready to issue it. People need the funds now and can't wait for one or two more months. I'm incredibly grateful that you started this grant, made the process straightforward and have amazing staff that communicate so well. When I heard that I was approved of the grant, I was surprised at how much relief I felt with these funds. I know I can make it through the next couple of months. Thank you for supporting small businesses and starting this grant so quickly. You're not just saving businesses, but aiding families. Please continue the work you're doing." Bridget Grief or Greif, Play Matters Occupational Therapy. The next one is, "Dear Council Members, We received the news of receiving a grant from the City of Lacey in Thurston, EDC. We literally teared up. It could not have been at a better time. Earlier that day, we had finished our cash flow projections and the outlook was not good. We were contemplating closing the doors for the remainder of the stay-at-home order. This grant gave us a needed lifeline and we are now able to stay open and service this incredible community. We are beyond grateful for the support that the City of Lacey has shown to the small business community. If you need more, please let, please let us know. Thank you." Chris and Gina Reimer, Gansing Goat Coffee Bar. The next one is from Loft A Hair Salon. "I have filled out every application for any sort of help I possibly could. As a small business owner, this is the most out of control I've ever felt. I still haven't heard back from most. I'm hopeful this stay-at-home order will be over May 5th, but we cannot predict the future. When I was contacted from Lacey, I could have cried. It was prompted and gave me a, it was prompt and gave me a second wind that we are going to be able to keep going. Now I have the breathing room to focus on making my business have an even better comeback than before this all started. My salon is going to thrive this summer. Thank you all so, so much." Emma McSherry, Loft A Hair Salon. And just one more. Pillowall, this is from North American Triumph Fitness USA. Pillowall, "Just a quick note of thanks from our, from us at Abstract Body Works at, on Lacey Boulevard for your amazing response with the grant monies to small business in Lacey. This is a godsend for us. We are a unique health studio that helps out our clients who is younger and stronger. We only get paid if clients come in and get their sessions. Unfortunately, we do not have a monthly auto bill membership. We only get the money from, for the month ahead. We have lost about a month of income with nothing being able to be billed. This grant will allow us to get our doors back open, pay utilities, rent and whatever is needed to stay in business. Thank you for your help and understanding. We have been in business for 13 years and plan to be around for many more. Thanks to you, to your help, we will. Thank you again, Jeff Turner." And some contact information. So, and that's just a snippet of some of the responses that we've been receiving back, that Kaylee's been receiving back in response to the effectiveness of this grant program. And so, now I'll read one more thing. This is a note from, from Kaylee. As she was giving me the reports and, and all the testimony, she said, "I hope you love reading this as much as I did. What you guys are doing for business is so much stronger, faster and more supportive to businesses than all the state and federal efforts. It's really amazing and the business of Lacey are so incredibly grateful." And so I just want to share that information for the council to have a little more perspective of the, of the impact of the decision to start this program. And what's also very nice is, as we probably all heard last week, the state, the governor's office announced they're doing a similar type of program allocated across the state. And part of that, they've contacted us to kind of get some idea of how we set ours up and pattern some of that effort after the council's action. So with that, I'll conclude my report for now and open up for some questions and I'll try to respond to questions as I can.
Great. I'll unmute Councilmember Stedman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, this is one of the reasons why I seek city council because at the local level, you can move the fastest and help the most people in the quickest amount of time. And, you know, saying that we care about our business community is one thing. Showing that we care is completely different. It just, you know, just shows how much we appreciate them and that's, I just want to share that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Deputy Mayor?
So Rick, do we know when the state will be up and running similar to us or is it up now? I'm so pleased they used us as an example.
The state program will be a couple of weeks. What they're doing is they're going to utilize what they call the ADOs, which is the Associated Economic Development Organizations. And for our county, that's the Thurston EDC. So they have their grant criteria, like I said, it's very similar. There's some differences. But a business in Thurston County will be able to make application to the Thurston EDC. The Thurston EDC will then do a pre-review of those applications and move it up to Department of Commerce for final approval. And my understanding is that program should be moving forward in the next week or so, but there's still some, some timeline to get the money onto the streets.
Okay.
So Rick, we've authorized the first 500,000 for this program and then we've authorized another 500,000 specifically for this program. How much more do you think we'll, we'll get to before our next council meeting?
Well, as I mentioned, we only have awarded 28 of the total of 165 applications. There is about $253,000 left in that first 500,000. If we go between the average of 8,500 per application to 10,000, that would be enough for another 25 to 29 grants. With going forward, I think if we wanted to allocate somewhere around $250,000 again into the program to continue that review, that will give us additional time to see how those additional applications are, how they set up and meet the criteria and qualify. And we would be able to award additional funds in the, in the next 25 to 29.
Councilmember Greenstein?
My understanding, unless I'm wrong, we don't need any council action to authorize the additional 500, correct? We've authorized the full million to go there. It was only if it was going to be used for something else that we needed council action, correct?
That is, that is correct. And, and so we can go ahead and fund additional grants. And if we wanted to do something different within those funds, we need to come back and, and have a conversation with council and seek approval.
Excellent. Thank you. Also, just while, while I'm on there, I just want to say thank you to you, Rick, and your team and, and EDC. It's incredible how fast this took place and how fast businesses are actually receiving the funds. And I've heard from several about how appreciative they are of that part of it. You know, that no one else operates as quickly as, as local government luckily. But even local government doesn't act that quickly usually, so thank you for your staff doing an incredible job.
Thank you. And these are unique times and I do want to, I did acknowledge Kaylee and Michael at the EDC, but I also want to acknowledge George Smith, my, my staff, as well as all my client staff. They all pivoted to focus the last two weeks from their normal duties to trying to respond to these issues around COVID-19. And then also with City Manager Scott and the rest of the director team being able to help with this process as quickly as possible, it was a total team effort.
Yeah, I agree. You know, as a small business owner myself, who's applied for every grant funding that's out there, the federal government and the state has just been very slow unfortunately to support businesses. Unfortunately, the PPP grant program has been a difficult rollout. The $10,000 emergency grant program, I don't know anyone who's received that money yet. And so the fact that Lacey has stepped up with this grant program and it's already helping people, I mean, it's, it's one of the best feelings I've ever had as an elected official here in Lacey, knowing that we're literally saving people's livelihoods. And so just a big shout out to Rick and, and the EDC for getting on this as soon as possible. Councilmember Stedman?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to tell the viewers and council members, spread the word to be sure to have that dialogue with your lending institutions, with your mortgages and your business loans and stuff like that. Both of my loans have been, had agreed to have three-month deferment payment and just had those three months added to the, into their note, end of the note. One with some strings attached. It's not a perfect science, but you know, the lending institutions want to do what they can and if they can. And so that's another option. And then according to my calculation, with the remaining part of the million dollars, it still leaves 60 to 70 applications. Isn't that correct, Rick? That can't be funded?
Yes. And if we, you know, do another round with using 250,000, that'll give us another 25 to 30 and then we can, you know, meter it out as we see fit going forward. So applications, we're still accepting applications, or excuse me, the EDC's still accepting applications and going through them and funding them on the, in first order received. So yeah, it provides that expanded capacity.
Great.
Well, and, and that's a concern to me. You know, I don't know if this council wants to consider any more reserves towards this program. It's obviously very popular and it's obviously having a huge positive impact on our business community. And our business community is, is our, is the health of our city. If you have a healthy business community, you have a healthy city and quality of life goes down if you don't. So just something I wanted to share.
Thank you. I'm, I'm really interested, as we go through this process in another two weeks, we'll hear another report back from Rick on where we're at. And I'm praying by then, the federal act, or if the federal government would have gotten their act together and some of our businesses will start seeing that emergency grant money and the PPP money. I can only hope that that will happen because that is really the only other lifeline to mostly workers in our city. You know, the, the grant program from the federal government is to hire your employees back and get, and get paychecks in their hands. There's not still a lot of options for business owners to pay for other things like cost of goods sold or whatever it takes to run their business. The PPP program is to hire employees back to pay a little rent and some interest on their loans and that is about it. So in some utilities, but, but this grant program from Lacey is the one that things that have saved businesses, no doubt. And so because people can't wait another four weeks, they just don't have the opportunities. Our margins are so small. So again, I'm, I'm very proud of what we've done as a council and I really look forward to hearing the continued success of, of this program. Let's see, Councilmember Cox.
Thank you. I largely agree with what the mayor just said. I would urge a little bit of caution about going beyond the money that we've appropriated for the moment because our sales tax revenues are likely to be really down and I think we're gonna be having to make some hard choices with budget in the future. So Troy and company have done a wonderful job of being conservative with budget, but I think we need to be prepared to make some choices and look at the big picture before we go forward with more. I mean, I agree with Councilmember Stedman. I am so proud and it feels so good, you know, that we were able to be out there first and, and be able to reassure our business community that we've got their backs as much as possible. But again, I deserve some balance and caution. Thank you.
I agree for sure. And that, can I move this back over to our city manager? When will we hear budget implications of COVID-19? I mean, we all know we've lost sales tax that we will never get back. I think the, most people have known that property taxes have been moved to June 1st for collections. We've moved our BNO tax collection till, what, July 31st? And so we're basically operating off of reserves until property tax comes in, until we, businesses get back open. And then you have to remember, it's a two-month lag before the city receives that sales tax. So what's the long-term plan here? I'm sorry to put you on the spot, city manager, but when will we hear what the city's gonna do to get us through this? I guess I have to unmute you. It's not letting me unmute you.
Okay, there we go. Wow, that's a lot of control. So no, that is a good question. You're absolutely right. We're not immune to the economic fallout of COVID-19. Sales taxes obviously taking a reduction as well as BNO tax. Property tax is gonna be stable, but it's gonna be delayed. We would like to come back to you in April 23rd and kind of roll out a COVID-19 budget strategy. We're already putting things in place to hopefully reduce the impacts of that, but we'd like to have a full discussion with the council at that time.
Great, thank you. So, Deputy Mayor.
Want to heads up that yesterday, the lot actually passed a, an emergency resolution and it, we're looking at ways to reduce the city's payment or not reduce it to, defer it to a later time, but we need a plan in place and stuff. So I need to talk with the city manager and our public works person to see how that would look and stuff, but even Lot is trying to come up with a way to help the cities.
Great, thank you for that. Deputy Mayor, under any other standing general committee reports, I know Councilmember Cox had something real quick you want to talk about?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Wanted to make sure that the community is aware that intercity transit has had to make some tough choices and that starting Monday, bus service is going to be by reservation only. And it's very important to know that you can't just pick up the phone and say, "I need a bus in 10 minutes." You're gonna have to call and make your reservation two to five days in advance. They are going to be staffing the phones between eight and five on Monday through Friday and on weekends between, excuse me, I lose my phone, between nine and four. So you should be able to get through without a problem, but it's just, you're gonna have to plan for that. Geila Lift operates under that system already. You need a couple of days' notice on that. The phone number is 360-786-1881. It's also important to know that the transit centers, both in Lacey and in Olympia, will be closed and that the, this reservation service will operate between 7:00 AM and 9:30 PM. If you go to the intercity transit website, there are, there's information on there, there's phone numbers on there, and I think they have some frequently asked questions as well that should be able to answer anybody's concerns. So this will, I mean, this is a product of COVID-19. Ridership dropped significantly, but there also were some concerning episodes that happened at the Olympia Transit Center and with damage and, and shots fired with a pellet gun that also went into this. So just everybody, you know, hang in, plan ahead and I think most of us are staying at home, so hopefully that won't make too big an impact on the community.
Great, thank you. Is there any other council member that has something from their committees that they would like to talk about? Let's see, Councilmember Stedman?
My committee meets tomorrow, actually, but I did want to reiterate the federal and state programs that anyone knows about, if we can promote them on the city Facebook and website.
Yes, Rick, I know you, you're, you're unmuted.
Okay, yeah, and we do have that information on our website. If you go to our homepage, COVID-19 tab, you click on that and now I have all the different resources, federal, state and local. We also have links to the Thurston Strong website as well as all the other regional partners that are providing services for both businesses as well as employees. The other thing we added to our, our website, I'm not sure if council's aware yet, is we added a link to a list of restaurants that we phone called and surveyed to find out what services are still provided, if they're open. And so if they're doing takeout, carryout, delivery, curbside, we have that listed up there. We just put up today a map that, also with pins, that you people can highlight pins and find out in their area what, what restaurants that are located and what services they provide. We couldn't get direct information, contact information, so people will have to Google that, that location if they don't have the phone number, but at least that's a resource that people can use. And then we also have a list of essential businesses that are still open, what their hours are and if they're providing special times for, for seniors. So for example, Costco or any of the other grocery stores, pharmacies, those type of businesses. So that's another resource that we provided on the website. And thanks to our public affairs department, they've been pushing this information out on their social media as well as our website to get as much channels out to the public. We also shared this information with the Lacey South Town chain so they can get it out through their channels and collaborate on that resource and information.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Kunkel?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a quick kudos to Rick Walk. I know that you basically walked all throughout Lacey looking for businesses that were open. And, I mean, you want to talk about footwork, I just wanted to give you kudos, Rick. Great job in doing that and that's, that's how you support a community and I just really appreciate what you did, so, thank you.
Thanks. Well, does city manager, do you have anything else for the good of the order?
You know, we're all adjusting to the new normal, but we all want to go back to the old normal, so appreciate everyone's support and we'll keep, continuing to adapt to this new situation.
Thank you. Well, I think this went pretty well for our first completely online remote attendance council meeting. Do you have something else real quick? Councilmember Stedman?
I was, I was just waving by.
Oh.
Bye.
Very, very good. Well, we reached the end of the agenda. Everyone, stay home, stay safe, stay healthy. We're gonna get through this. I'm, I'm, keep my fingers crossed, like I'm sure everyone else here is, that, that we flattened the curve. We've seen the worst of it, hopefully at least here in Washington State. I know that Thurston County has had less cases than any other larger county in, in Washington State. So that means the, the actions that we've taken here as a city, as Thurston County, as, as the, the three larger cities, has definitely had a huge impact on flattening, flattening this curve. It, it could have been a lot worse if we didn't react as quickly as we did and get the word out to everyone that please, you have to stay home, stay safe, stay healthy, social distancing. And that word obviously got out for the most part. We've all had the phone calls from, from the public who has noticed someone not, you know, going through their social distancing and, and we understand that. But I think for the most part, we've been lucky here where we've had some great people who understand how difficult this is, but have followed the social distancing requirements and that has made a difference in our community. So we've reached the end of our agenda. As always, you keep it classy, Lacey, and I'll call this meeting adjourned.